This meeting is called to order at 6:45. Thank you all for coming. We'll take, if it's on, we're going to take a quorum today. Mr. Salinas?
President, I want to thank everybody here in D.C.
Ms. Pashaw?
Here, thank you, and thank you for being here.
Mr. Flores?
President, thank you for being here.
Dr. Salinas?
President, thank you for being here tonight.
Mr. LaFoil?
Welcome, I'm very gracious if I don't see you.
Mr. Mancias?
Thank you, and honored you're here.
I'm Steve Salyer, Board President, and Dr. Montoya, Superintendent. Thank you. We all stand for the invocation of Fledge of Allegiance, please.
Please bow your heads. Lord, we thank you for many things. We thank you, first of all, for our democracy that allows us to come together and express our interests and feelings that we have on various decisions. Secondly, we thank you for all our people that are here because deep in their heart, I know that they're here to assist students and staff at a school and our community and our school district. And lastly, please protect all of the people here and their families during the Christmas holiday. We pray in the name of the Lord. Amen.
Do you want me to pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On Texas land, our pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Let me see, please. I want to recognize a couple of people in the audience. We have Mr. Gary Edman, former president of Tasby and on the school board in shirts of Siplo Universal City. Mr. Wayne Harper, former board member. And I believe Johnny Harris is back there, former board member also. Do I miss anybody? I don't think I missed anybody. Okay. This special meeting of the Judson Board of Trustees is hereby called to order at 6:45. I am very pleased that you have taken time to join us this evening. As a Judson Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals and policies and oversee the management of the district. We are responsible for approving budgets, contracts, personal appointments, and a listen to reports from the superintendent. We are not here to make administrative or management decisions pertaining to the daily operation of the district. This is the responsibility of the superintendent. And compliance with state government code on open meetings tonight's agenda has been appropriately posted. This is a meeting in the public, not a meeting of the public. As our guests, you are welcome to observe and listen. These proceedings are being video and only recorded and may and will become part of Judson's permanent legal record. In order that the tape adequately reflects these proceedings, please silence your mobile phones and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that these proceedings are recorded accurately, I may have to ask periodically for orders should disruptions occur. Once again, thank you for coming. Okay, we're going to go into agenda items here. We're going to go into citizens to be heard. Okay. This time is-
Mr. Salyer? I'd like to, before we start citizens to be heard, consider allowing our speakers a little more time than the three minutes.
No, we have over thirty, and it's going to be three minutes. That's what our board policy says, so we're going to do three minutes.
And I understand that. Again, just going back to what Dr. Salinas has said in the past about the first meeting where we allotted more time for viewpoints that were in favor of the school, so to be consistent, we should allow the same way to individuals who may not have the same viewpoint.
Well, we're going to go by board policy tonight, because obviously some people don't like the board policy.
Well, and again, I always-
I'm presiding officer, and we're going to go by three minutes.
I will go by consensus of the board, as again, again, it's not-
No, we don't like consensus of the board.
Yes, we do. It's parliamentary procedure. I mean, you've got to read your rubber rules of order.
Rubber rules of orders, okay.
And so consensus. And we may not have it. People may not want to allow citizens a few more minutes, but certainly, it's not your decision, so can I ask-
Well, it is. I'm the presiding officer. We go by the, by the order.
And I appreciate you're the presiding officer, but you're not the dictator.
And you're not going to interrupt the meeting. You're not, we're called on, so we're going to go by three minutes.
I ask for consensus first. If the board would like to defer to allow our citizens a few more-
Mr. Mancias, you are not running this meeting. I am. You are not the board president.
And you are not the dictator. It's not all up to you.
Well, Mr. Mancias-
So it's up to the board, and we are a democratic elected board. It's up to us.
And I'm going by the board policy.
Well, and board policy says consensus of the board.
Well, okay, hold it just a minute. Let me read something to you here. You want me to read something to you, the board policy? Hold on just a second. Let me find it. Per, it says, let me show you everybody this. This is our board operating procedures, signed eight, January sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen. It's signed by Mr. Salinas as board president and Mr. Mancias as board secretary. Those are the certifying officers of any document that comes out. So I'm going to read this to you, exactly what the agenda says. I mean, what the, what it says here. Let me find it. Citizens Desiring to Be Heard, Section Two, A, One. Persons wishing to address the board may do so during Citizens to be Heard segment of the meeting by signing the visitor's registration sheet. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Delegations of more than five persons shall appoint one person to present their views to the board. That's our board policy, which you signed, the secretary, Mr. Mancias.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with you. You're absolutely right. All I'm saying that is, we have the opportunity, just like we did with the first group in September, to extend their time. And that's all I'm asking for.
Well, we're not going to do it. We have over thirty. We have over thirty, and we're going to continue by board policy, which is this.
And just because you didn't have thirty in September, it was okay? I just want to point out the inconsistencies.
Mr. Mancias, okay, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to move on here, okay? This time is provided-
Do we, do we have consensus of the board? I want you to treat the board equally. You do not-
Mr. Mancias, you are out of order.
Yes, you're out of order.
You are out of order.
I asked for consensus.
You have been warned, Mr. Mancias.
I have asked for consensus of the board.
Mr. Mancias?
Can we have consensus of the board about allowing citizens-
We are following board procedures.
Ask my colleagues. You're not the only one.
Okay. Mr. Mancias, you've been warned once. You want me to warn you again?
What are you going to do?
Okay, go ahead.
So, I mean, come on now.
All right, see what we're up against here? See what we're up against here?
Just ask the board if it's okay to extend.
Right there? You know? Board policy rules, okay?
The board, you violated board policy in the past.
Officer, if that man speaks again, you will remove him. Okay? You've been warned, sir. You have been warned. Okay?
Allow us consensus.
This, this, this meeting is going to be conducted professionally.
Mr. Salyer, allow us consensus. It's not up to you. Just ask, is it okay to give our citizens more time? Yes or no?
You're not running this meeting, Mr. Mancias. You're making a spectacle of yourself in this meeting.
Well, I'm sorry you feel that way, but I think you're pretty much doing the same thing.
We're going by board policy.
Parliamentary procedure states consensus. I put the question out there.
It's not a question. We're not even, we're not even having a subject out, Mr. Mancias.
It's about citizens to be heard, yes or no.
Right, it is. And board policy says three minutes. We're done arguing. We're done. Don't interrupt this meeting, Mr. Mancias.
I'm not, I have every right to speak at this meeting.
You don't have, you don't have the right to interrupt this meeting.
If I have a point to question, yes, I do.
Well, you keep on talking, and when you're done, we will continue.
I'm just going to note that since no one else has spoken up, there's probably not consensus on this board to extend.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So you wasted some time here, Mr. Mancias.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Then you need to explain to the people why you did not follow the rule on September the sixteenth.
Okay. You know why? And I'll tell you exactly why. Because it was a special meeting, and I gave courtesy at the first meeting for people to speak. Okay? Now, since there's been this uproar over all this, we're going to stick to policy. Okay? And if you, and I'm going to tell you right now. So we're going to move on, okay? We're going to move on. This time is provided for citizens to address the board on issues and concerns. A person may speak one time for a person of three minutes. Presentation shall be informative only. No board action will be taken. A complaint or charge against an officer or employee of the district is not allowed in open session. Complaints concerned for which other resolution channels are provided shall be directed through those channels. The presiding officer shall determine whether a person who wishes to address the board has attempted to solve a matter administratively. If not, the person shall be directed to the appropriate policy to seek resolution before bringing the matter to the board as a segment meeting. Citizens wishing to receive response from concerns presented to the board must provide written documentation. The board shall not deliberate or deciding regarding any subject that includes on the agenda post with notice in the meeting. Now, I'm going to read something else from our board policy here. And I want everybody to stand, understand this too. This is Section Three, Conduct During a Board Meeting, A, Citizens Desire to Be Heard. Number five. If a citizen acts in a disruptive manner, the person shall receive a verbal warning from the presiding officer. The warning should include informing the person that if the disruptive behavior continues, the person will be asked to leave the meeting. If the citizen continues to interrupt behavior and does not leave the, leave at the presiding officer's request, the presiding officer will ask security to escort the disruptive person off the premises. Once escorted off the premises, the person is not permitted to return during the meeting for policy B E D local. So, there will be no slanderous, malicious statements or personal attacks of any current or former employee or current and former board member. I'm just warning you. This will be a respectful meeting. If you want to come up and you wanted to voice your opinion respectfully, I welcome it. Okay? That's what this is about. But I'm going to tell you right now, I am not going to tolerate any disruptive or disrespectful language. So let's move on. Okay, Mr. Ken Lucas. And it starts now.
Sadly, the majority consensus of the individuals sitting in front of us tonight don't care about being a public servant. I attended Kitty Hawk. I'm a Judson class of eighty-nine, part of the eighty-eight state championship finalist team, who, many of y'all watched this play, where we earned the pride, distinction, honor, and respect that Judson has now earned and is noted for. Served fifteen years as a Marine Corps officer and a combat veteran. But let me get to the point that I wanted to get to tonight. I'm glad to see you here tonight, Mr. Member Salyer. Appreciate you being here for this meeting. I'm sure that you've reviewed my, my minutes and what I spoke about last time, so I won't have to rehash that. I will bring this. Major, amazing. Even power goes out when I speak. Every single day for ten days, I send each of you emails about, trying to find out your position and your insight on this very matter, the three action items that are on, on the agenda for tonight. Three of you responded. Thank you very, very much. I appreciate it. Very kind. Member Salyer, minus your one, one-sentence email back to me. Mr. Flores, Ms. Michelle, and Mr. LaFoil are apparently too arrogant to even respond to an email. That's not being a representative. Go look up "public servant" and see what it says. You are not serving the public by disregarding emails and not responding. Mr. Salyer, as pointed out, as Mr. Mancias was just trying to say, you're not a king. This is done by majority. You're a presiding officer. Go back and read your rules about what presiding means. That doesn't mean you're a king. This is majority. This is a democracy, and democracy rules here. Examples of being a king, not placing an item onto the agenda as requested by a member. Violate your rules. Member Mancias asked for other items to be on the agenda. You, you unilaterally shut them down, violating your own rules. Timelines on speakers, violating your own rules. You set the precedent, sir. Thinking like that of twelve-
You have one minute, sir.
One thousand, two hundred and seventy-two emails were sent to just the J I S D email addresses that some of you all have. Mr. Salyer, you're one of them. Twenty-five-hundred-plus signatures have been signed on a petition about this very issue. You've seen it. Yet you still sit here and say that you want to continue this process. Tonight, you have the ability to stand up as a leader. Tonight, you have the, the ability to shut down a grievance process. Tonight, you have the ability to be a man and do what we expect you to do as a citizen of these groups.
You're almost out of line there, sir.
I can almost be anything I want.
Sir, you've been warned.
You have the opportunity tonight to do and take action on the three action items. I'll extend, I'll expect another ten seconds since you're disrupting me.
No, sir, you don't. You will not get another ten seconds.
I don't even have a stake in this fight. I don't even know Dr. Mackey. I'm sure he's a great man. But if the majority continues to down this path, you've lost the very respect of the individuals that you're going to now go ask a bond to be passed for, increase their taxes.
Your time is up, sir.
You, sir, you want to do that? I ask you to step up and be a leader.
Your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Cindy Green Lucas? Ms. Lucas?
I would not defer, not for minutes to Mr. Lucas to continue.
That doesn't how it works. That doesn't how it works. You don't defer.
I would not defer.
Ma'am, you're out of order. You do not defer.
I would not defer.
Ma'am, you are out of order. You do not make the rules here. If you want to speak, you may speak. You may speak, ma'am. You may speak.
Let me, let me ask. I can ask. Where in our policy does it say that we can't defer?
Where does it say we can?
It doesn't, which means it allows it.
Where does it say we can?
Which means it allows it.
Show me where it can.
So when it says it can or cannot, it's open. It's not in there.
It doesn't say it can.
Apparently, we can do that.
Well, no, we can. No, you're making it up, Mr. Mancias.
If it's not in there, I'm not making stuff up.
You're making it up as always.
So I would allow him, allow the defer.
Nope, no deference. He spoke one time for three. You have the privilege of speaking, ma'am.
They're deferring their time. If it's not clearly written here, we, I mean-
Take the podium or not, you have the right to speak. Go right ahead. Yeah. They're trying to run this meeting. They're not going to do it.
My husband, being an elected official, twice elected official, is certainly more eloquent in his speech than I am. He is certainly more politically correct when it comes to addressing this board and President Salyer. So with that being said, there is notes upon notes in this notebook here in which he has done his homework and research in regards to the policing, policies and procedures that have been broken and the dictatorship that one individual, the leader of this board, thinks that he has. Tonight is not about what the name of the school is going to be. It's about following policy and procedure for the individuals that have fought and paid for our freedom. I could sit here and continue and read on with Ken's notes that he has made, because, again, he has reached out to all of these members over and over and over with limited response. However, I'm not going to do that. I'm going to speak from my heart instead of reading what's on his paper here. I have watched, been to Judson games. I'm not from, from Texas, even though I have a little bit of a twang. I'm a North Louisiana girl who transplanted to San Antonio about five years ago. I couldn't understand what Judson pride was. He talked about it. I heard his parents talk about it, his friends talk about it, but I had no comprehension of what that was about, the pride that Judson represents, until I got here. And then I saw for myself the unity of those former players and their teachers and their coaches. I witnessed that. I heard the chant, the hey-hey. And I have to tell you what a legacy your dad left behind with that. But it's about Judson pride. Where is the pride in anything that's taken place here with any of this? There's not. I am ashamed for this board, because you are tasked with these children's education, and when you can't make any better decisions than what you're making with that, with this in regards to a name, do you honestly think you deserve that right to sit in the seat that you're sitting in? I'm sure on Election Day, there'll be some that'll feel a little different than what they felt initially. I know, I have fifty-six seconds left, too. It's amazing that you're not reminding me of that, just as you did my husband. Of course, then again, you chose not to respond to any of his emails, with the exception of the one that seemed to be offensive to you. I would encourage you as a community to stand together regardless of whatever the name is. Stand together for Judson pride, because that is what this is all about. Do not allow one individual to be a king, because he's not. You elected him into the position that he's in. You will determine whether or not he stays in that position. And I hope you can live with those decisions that you make.
Okay, Ms. Amy, I think it's Hickson?
Since Ken can't speak, I'm going to finish reading his. I was a graduate of Judson High School from nineteen eighty-five. I've been part of the board meetings before, when my daughter was in high school and the school board wanted to ban books. So this ranks right up there with it. Member Pascal, I am particularly ashamed of you and your actions. Two words, your dad, the hey-hey man. I just heard his chant at the game this past Saturday. In his words, I quote, "Let's win this game to save our name from disgrace and shame." The actions of this board, particularly Member Salyer and his sheep followers, defies these words. It has done the exact opposite. It has brought disgrace and shame to the Judson name. Student, faculty, parents, and the community, and now all of S.A., see the tarnished name of Judson because of you. If Mr. Mackey had any honor or respect for J I S D, he would withdraw his name, and this would all end. Not holding my breath, he has that kind of honor. In close, Member Salyer and his sheep followers have done nothing but tarnish J I S D and bring his entire immunity against you and their representatives. These same people who have lost faith in you to simply name a high school in the right way are the very same people you are now asking to approve a bond. You apparently relish in creating turmoil and being the hated guy. Well done. You fulfilled your goal with zest and arrogance. However, there is a special kind of stupid for that mentality and shallow thinking. You sit there and exemplify it, Member Salyer. Again, I am in strong favor of renaming this high school after Mr. Eddie Parsley. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Dawn Parsley Johnson?
After last month's board meeting, I took some time to peruse my father's scrapbook relating to his career at Judson. I came across a school program containing a brief welcome letter he had written to the program attendees. In his welcome, he stated, "Rocket pride is not just words we say at Judson High School. Rocket pride is a way of life that will go with us long after we leave Judson. It is a spirit that will help us meet all our future challenges." Mr. Mancias recently stated that this community is currently more united than he has seen in recent years. What he is witnessing is the rocket pride Mr. Parsley referenced. There is a spirit within this community that has been reawakened. People remember. When the issue of naming the new high school first arose, many did not even feel it necessary to speak on this matter. They believed, just as I did, that Eddie Parsley was such an obvious choice for this honor, it seemed unfathomable he not be chosen. As time progressed, however, it became evident that some members of this board had other intentions. That is when the groundswell began, and you started to see people speak up and engage, so much so that there have now been nearly one thousand, one hundred viewings of the November board meeting online. People are paying attention. The name on this high school does matter. For me personally, this isn't even about Dr. Mackey. It is about honoring a man who gave thirty years of his life to this district and successfully oversaw its high school during a period of tremendous growth and change. The fact that there have been no less than six principals at the helm of Judson High School in the fifteen years since Eddie's Parsley's retirement speaks directly to his level of commitment to and belief in the students and teachers of this community. Given the length of his service, the strength of his commitment, and the impact he had on shaping Judson's future, he is the embodiment of all that is rocket pride. U.S. Department of Education Blue Ribbon School Principal. U.S. Department of Education New American High School Principal. Mentor Principal for High Schools That Work Program. Region twenty T A S S P Outstanding Principal. Recipient of Trinity University's Luby Prize for Educational Leadership. Caring, Intelligent, Visionary Innovator. In closing, I would like to quote Mrs. Janice Wyndham in her letter nominating Mr. Parsley as T A S S P High School Principal of the Year. Thomas E. Parsley has accomplished through caring, intelligent, visionary leadership, a high school that excels in academic and extracurricular programs, and he will influence the direction of public education in Texas in the foreseeable future more than any other high school principal. And he did. Do the right thing, change the name of this school.
Good evening, board members. Again, I am here to speak to you about the naming of the new high school. Judson I S D is a district that is full of traditions, and it instills, and it instills such great pride in our students that they carry with them for the rest of their life. How do I know this? Because I am one of them. I care about my community and what goes on in my community, but I am, but I am not very proud of the way this board has carried on in regards to naming this new high school. Dr. Mackey is an unprofessional man, and over the past three months, it has been proven here in these board meetings that he is a bully. How horrible and, and how horribly he has treated people and employees of the Judson I S D district. Doesn't our district have a policy, a no bully policy, a no tolerance for bullies? What are we teaching our kids? When you vote on this, I want each of you to think about the message that you are sending our children. If the decision tonight does not change, I believe that you are teaching and telling our children that it is okay to be mean and nasty to people. I'm sorry, but I don't, that's not me. That's not what I want our kids to learn. And our kids are watching this. Mr. LaFoil, you are my board member for District Two. You and I chatted a bit during the break at last, the last board meeting. You told me that you didn't have any hard feelings toward me, and I told you I didn't have any hard feelings toward you. But you are my board member for District Two, and you were supposed to be my voice. Also in that conversation, you told me that you had spoken to a little girl earlier that day, and that she had opened your eyes about the situation, and you told me to wait and watch what happens. Yes, you voted not to approve the minutes to the last meeting. I'm sorry, that still doesn't prove anything to me. But when it's your turn to vote, I would like for you to think about those students that you serve and you volunteer for. Please, show me and all the citizens of District Two that you will take a stand and do what's right. Tonight's vote will prove to me that you are the great person I know you to be. Thank you.
I think it's Kay Shoemaker? 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 Did I say it right? Shoemaker?
Good evening. I spoke at the, the last board meeting, and I was very passionate about what I said. I had listened to all of the constituents. I had taken my time to, to kind of go through all that information. Again, I really felt like that the, the name that you've selected wasn't even an issue. I, I agree with you. I think that's why people didn't really come to that first meeting. It was a non-issue. I didn't know Mr. Parsley, but I, I certainly like the words that I hear people talk about to describe him, kind, caring, compassionate. When I spoke last time, I did talk about my knowledge of Mackey that was secondhand, but it was through teachers, teachers that I knew, that I trusted, that became my friends. And there were no kind words. Those weren't the words I heard. It was bully. It was bully, it was intimidating. And then in the meetings, I heard these other people say things that this man spoke of and the language that he used. I find it unconscionable that you can support that kind of a decision for our community. 2,500-plus people have signed a petition. It's more people that have gotten involved in the community in how long? Ever, maybe. I just, I hear those words and I think about the people that are sitting up here on the board, and I think about the lack of response or the short dismissive responses that I got, and I'm thinking, is there a culture maybe that this man brought to the board that maybe you're having a hard time getting over or getting rid of? I had a brief conversation last week with Mr. LaFOyle. I don't believe I've ever been spoken to so rudely by an official that's supposed to represent the community. He hung up on me. He almost yelled at me. I was a professional person. I left a message on his call, his phone. I asked him to return my call. I didn't say any ugly names to him or anything that would require anybody to respond the way he did. Mr. LaFOyle, I'm not your sweetheart, and I don't approve or appreciate that kind of language. I'm a grown-up woman, and that condescending language is along the same lines of bullying and intimidating. It's not acceptable. In this day and age, it's not acceptable to treat your constituents that way. Again, let's have a vote for someone who represents something that we can all be proud of, like we are proud of Judson and we are proud of Wagner. Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank Dr. Salinas for sending timely responses to each of my emails that I have sent to you and to your fellow board trustees. Mr. Macias, thank you for your responses to my concerns. The Force Awakens. Obi-Wan Kenobi said, "The Force surrounds us and penetrates us. It binds the galaxy together." Yes, the Force surrounds us and binds us within our galaxy, the Judson District. The community of citizens within its boundaries are here. What happens within the district penetrates us, and it does bind us together. Tonight, and for a few months, there has been a great disturbance in the Force. Obi-Wan Kenobi also said, "I felt a great disturbance in the Force, as if millions of voices suddenly cried out in terror and were suddenly silenced." Yes, we all felt a great disturbance when the name of the new high school was announced, and yes, voices did suddenly cry out in terror, but suddenly, we were not silenced. We became united and spoke out, and that is what binds us together tonight. We are the Force. Mr. Salinas, Dr. Salinas have been with us on the Force. Mr. Macias, you left the dark side and joined the Force. But, Ms. Pashal, Mr. Flores, Mr. LaFOyle, Mr. Sawyer, you are still on the dark side. Use the Force. Tonight, use the Force to right a wrong within the galaxy. Feel the Force and take action. Rescind the name that has been chosen. Join the Force. Become one with the Force. And name the new high school located at Evans Road with a name of honor and dignity, a name with outstanding character, a name that deserves such an honor. Mr. LaFOyle, I feel the Force is strong with you tonight. Feel the Force and use the strength to leave the dark side. Use the strength of the Force to take action and rescind the name of the high school located at Evans Road. Use the Force, Mr. LaFOyle. Be the young Jedi in training who uses the Force in compassion and selflessness. A Jedi's strength flows from the Force. Feel the strength of the Force as your fellow Jedi warriors have asked you to do, and reconsider and take action on the remaining, the renaming of the high school. Be one with the Force. Mr. Flores, the Force may be strong with you too. Become one with the Force. Use the Force to take action and rescind the name of the high school located. As I close quickly, because I have five minutes, five seconds. The Force runs strong in this family, the Judson District, and those that embrace the dark side do so to seize power and not for the good of the galaxy. Remember, the Force will remember come election time. At the end of your rule is, and not short enough, it was.
My name is Lisa Ward-Hutchins, and I'm a proud Judson Rocket from class of 1990. I went from kindergarten to my senior year in Judson School District. Mr. President and board members, I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to express my support for naming the new high school after Thomas E. Parsley. His commitment and dedication to this school district for over 30 years, the lives he touched, the abundance of people here tonight supporting this effort are reason enough. But let me go further. 30 years, from 1974 to 2001, just think of those 30 years. Think of how many students he impacted and mentored over those years, well over 100,000 students. Mr. Parsley had a servant's heart, dedicated, a compassion for his students. He went out of his way to make all of his students feel special and important. They mattered to him. These were his students. He cared about them on and off the campus and cultivated a sense of high integrity and rocket pride in our community and schools. Look at all the awards he brought back to the Judson School District in his various positions. Has anyone else in this district achieved his success? Mr. Parsley is a man who had passion about people and his team. Together, everyone achieves more. When you honor Mr. Parsley, you are honoring not only him, but his legendary teams. You honor the men and women who worked for the Judson ISD District during his legendary years, our educators, our coaches, our administrators, our counselors, our cafeteria teams, our maintenance teams, bus drivers, paraprofessionals, and our domestic engineers that beautified our campuses. And you know, all these people were part of the success of our Judson Independent School District, all our elementary schools. I'm a proud Olympian unicorn, and I'm proud of that team that was there. I'm from Kirby Middle School, Kitty Hawk Middle School. I'm a proud Kitty Hawk Flyer, and I want to say shout-out to Mr. Haxton, Mr. Cox, Mrs. Harrison, Coach Lewis Campbell, Coach Michaels, Mr. Salinas, all of our Judson Rocket educators, Mr. Tally, Mr. Myers, Mr. Pollan, all of them, Mrs. Marbuck, Ms. Dolph, Coach Whitlock, Coach Arnold, Coach Redditch, Mr. Mitchel, Pashal. You know, this was the best of the best. He created a sisterhood and brotherhood among his students. We were brothers and sisters in our rocket pride community. He is not only Mr. Parsley, he is rocket pride, a true hero, a man that made a difference and makes the world a better place. He is only one person, and the board, he should be the only person this board should consider naming the new school after. Please do the right thing tonight. The new school that should be named Thomas E. Parsley High School, a name we can trust, a name we honor, and a name we are proud of. And I want to thank you for your time, and I want to say we believe in Mr. Parsley. And I want to say, and I have seven seconds, there is no, we have the best brotherhood and sisterhood at Judson High School because of the leadership and because of Eddie Parsley. Thank you.
Don't know the thousands of dollars that I put away in this district and continue to regardless. All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm sorry. Got sidetracked just a little bit. All right. That's all right. You take those other papers out?
Yeah.
Take them up. Get them up to them. Yeah. Couple things going out to you this evening. First thing going out to you is a bounder that I passed out during the last time to talk about Dr. Mackey. Community-wide nomination, Superintendent of Judson ISD from 2007 to 2015, achieved optimal levels of schools and student achievements, performances, accomplishments during his tenure as Superintendent of Judson ISD. Established an effective system of managing the district daily operation, he was enthusiastic, inspiring, influential in attracting additional growth and development to the district. He is a respected advisor and counselor on and off the job. Judson ISD became a recognized district under his leadership. Recruited highly skilled employees to positions of leadership and management. Effectively managed change and promoted higher education. He took prompt action to memorize and eliminate trouble spots during his tenure. He developed important strategic planning, mission, and the image that, excuse me, the Imagine 2014 Vision Plan that worked. He kept the community and the board informed. Strong supporter of Judson Education Foundation, which we attend a lot of the gala events, and you know, we used to go head-to-head bidding on some of the events, and we bid thousands of dollars on events, and we gave our own money to the district quite a bit, and still continue to do that. Also, he joined many community groups and is still a supporter of the district today. Dr. Mackey lives in Judson ISD and supports education, the community, and local programs. I sat here tonight listening to a lot, and what it brings back to the heart, a lot of people speak from the heart, but you got to start thinking from the brain. All right. That's what we really think from. When you have issues like this, you got to think from your brain. There's no comparison between Mr. Parsley and Dr. Mackey. Two different tiers, okay? All right. Two different tiers. Two different tiers. All right. One was the superintendent, Mr. Parsley was a school principal. Two different things. And what I have to tell you this evening is that you got to understand that Dr. Mackey did a lot, and when he leave, you know, just like when Steel, the guy from Steel left, they were in up roles already still. But guess what? They named after Steel. Guess what? Lee had an issue there. They can't change history. You may not agree with some things that changed, what happened in history, but you can't change it. So Lee stayed the same way it was also. The EIS report I gave you talks about the teacher turnover ratio, highest ever in 2006 before Dr. Mackey got here. Talked about the fund ballots, 23 million, now what? 47 million after Dr. Mackey left. So there's a lot of issues there, okay? So I want to thank you for your time this evening, and I want to say, don't close the doors on Mackey High School before the open.
Ms. Elizabeth Harper? Ms. Harper? No? Okay. Natasha Harper? No? Okay.
I just really want to clear up one thing that was mentioned in the last meeting. Somebody got up and spoke and said that Dr. Mackey did not start the JECCA program. He did start the JECCA program. It may not have been his vision, but when he got here, the JECCA program had not started. He hired people. He sent people out throughout the state to research this thing, and that's when it got started. He had the building built. All of this information that you guys come up here and say you don't have the background on it, he did start it. It did not start until after he got here. Another thing that I would like to say, each and everybody has an opinion, their own opinion. You shouldn't try to force your opinions on everybody else. And the thing is, we do agree with the things with naming the school after Dr. Mackey, and it has been voted on, and for it to come back up to be revoted on, to me, that's not right. How often has that been done in Judson District to revote on something that's already been voted on and set in stone? Well, set in stone, really. So now, all of a sudden, it wants to be revoted on because you don't agree with it? There's a lot of things that we don't agree with, but we got to roll with the punches. And I think that that, that's the way it should be. It's already been voted on, it's already been set, it's already been out there, and now because you don't agree, you want to change it? Think about it.
Thank you. Ms. Keith, Mr. Keith Marshall? Keith Marshall?
Good evening, board. Good evening, attendees. The last time I was here to speak before this board was during the naming of the high school. A lot of people out here I recognize today, a lot of people I don't recognize, because at that meeting, you weren't here. So I've always been taught that the squeaky wheel gets the grease. In relationship to that, I'm trying to figure out, who is this man that you guys are talking about? Because the Dr. Mackey I know is not who I've heard you guys speak about. I'm taken aback by some of the things that have been said in regards to this man. I'm really blown away by it. I know this man personally. I know him personally from the fact that my 10-year-old daughter had an opportunity to hear him speak. From that speech, my 10-year-old daughter purposed in her heart that she would go on to graduate college. My 10-year-old daughter, 18 at this moment, graduated JECCA last year. She currently attends Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi, doing exceedingly well. The inspiration she got from that not only came from him, but it also came from within our family as well. I'm the father of four girls, three are college graduates, two graduated Judson Independent School District. Very proud of that. We talk about pride, and we talk about dishonor, and I've heard those words, and they seem to be interchanged in what we're doing here. I really don't understand. Dr. Mackey's credentials speak for themselves. So I submit to you, those in this room today, what's the problem? What's the problem? Let me tell you what the problem is. It's 2015, and the 800-pound gorilla is still in the room. We cannot seem, we cannot seem to get past, we cannot seem to get past these issues. And I'm taken aback. I don't understand. I know this man to be in honorable room. You know what else I find amazing? That when I stated that the 800-pound gorilla is still in this room, everybody in this room knew what I was talking about. Thank you.
Bishop Brent Bryant? Bishop? Yeah. Bishop Bryant?
Good evening to all you board members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am a preacher, but I will give you some change on your time tonight. My children as well graduated from this school district. I am certainly proud. I've lived here most of my time in Texas. I'm from Tennessee, but I couldn't get here fast enough to Texas. I, I'm concerned primarily about the process. Process meaning that if we voted the last time, speaking of the board, and now we're here tonight for the purpose of rescinding, then the next issue, and the following issue, and the issue after that, how will this board react? Understand that there is some misunderstanding and perhaps dislike about the fact that the school has been named after Dr. Mackey. I fully understand. I fully understand the whole process in terms of the feelings that are being expressed here tonight. But the process is the issue for me, and we went through the process, and the process worked, and we got the vote. And now, you're saying that the process doesn't work. There is a problem there. So I suggest that perhaps we need to lower our feelings. We can express ourselves, but we still have to live in this community together. We still have an opportunity and an obligation to educate these children. We still need this board to operate fully, and we need to be able to trust the process. But right now, because of tonight, the process is an issue for me. Thank you.
Hi, y'all. Thank you for putting it on the agenda today for this special meeting. I already spoke to Mr. Flores about this, but Mr. Salier, you and Mr. Flores got involved last year with some incident where a PTO president and vice president were having a catfight, which was a campus issue, and one filed a grievance on another. And your rationale to get the other board members involved was that you needed to let your constituents know that you're hearing us. This is just one woman fighting with another woman, but yet you all ended up getting involved because that's how you convinced the board to get involved. Well, now you have hundreds of us here, and your actions have not shown us that you're listening to us. And, you know, as far as the process, there is a problem with the process because Dr. Mackey was not even one of the top five. And as far as you mentioning that, you know, the man that you know, well, the man that we knew, that we worked under, he instilled fear and intimidation with we knew, that we worked under, he instilled fear and intimidation with staff. I know. Not only was the bus, I was thrown under the bus, he helped run it over. And he also, instead of, you know, consequencing everybody involved in my issue, he promoted one who wasn't even an assistant principal one year and made her a principal the following year to, you know, to congratulate her for lying on the stand. So, I know what this man is about. He manipulates, he, you know, twists things around for his own agenda, and he does not care how it hurts us. Because this ruined my life, so I know what Dr. Mackey's all about. And he does not deserve a school named after him. And I know that for those of you that voted for the bond for this new school, you know, it's to help with the overcrowding at Judson ISD, I can tell you, there's still gonna be a overcrowding issue, not only for the career path, because it's not at the new school, two, none of us are gonna want our kids going to Mackey High School. I'd rather go to somebody that's deserving of it, who made a positive impact, not only with the students, but its staff. Because I watched him belittle the administrators and the teachers. He, he was arrogant and gloated about the, what the media would say about him, that he was arrogant. And he would tell us he was proud of it, because he is arrogant. And this, I know for a fact, because I sat at a staff meeting with, when he would talk like that. So, I'm not worried about what he thinks, because he, he gets off on this. And so, I'm not worried about his feelings and him being judged. What y'all should be more concerned about is that we are hurt by this. We need change. We need for you to listen to us. We voted for you to, for our own voices, not for your own personal agendas. Thank you.
Ms. Candy Hale?
I just have one question, and it's really for Dr. Mackey. I'm sure you'll be watching this video in the near future. But, Dr. Mackey, did you really say, "I have to break Judson's spirit because they have too much pride"? Well, let me tell you a little bit something about this Judson spirit and pride thing. Way back in the day, there was a bond between hard-working administrators, faculty, and staff. Some of these great bond builders included people like Eddie Parsley, Jerry Trees, Janice Wyndham, Charlie and Annabeth Newmeyer, Tim Coyle, and Melvin Eckert as, as of late. And there are others who helped build a tight bond. If you had an issue, or if they had an issue with you, you simply went in and you were either supported or you were set straight. But it went no further. We worked together, and there was no fear of retaliation. We were all respected. We were proud and honored to say that we worked at Judson. You see, education is a people business. Respect is the foundation by which it stands. But respect left, and retaliation became the norm during Dr. Mackey's tenure. People all over the district became fearful and threatened. We actually believe that there were hidden cameras everywhere. The district ordered climate surveys because, but we were afraid that they were truly, they were not really anonymous, and so people didn't even answer them correctly because we feared retaliation. Great teachers began to leave, and Judson could no longer recruit top-notch educators. All the districts around Judson began seeing that it was not the place to go to work. Today, there are employees all over this district that still have this fear of retaliation. They are afraid to speak. I've been talking to them. Bonds between administrators and staff cannot be formed because there is a spirit of fear and a lack of respect. If you're sitting around this table today, and you're a leader in capacity, leadership capacity at the district office or on a campus, and you're following Mackey's lead by disrespecting people, and you believe that you must break Judson's spirit because we have too much pride, then Judson is not the place for you. Please leave. In conclusion, Dr. Mackey, I think the problem was that you really never understood what Judson's spirit really was. From the outside looking in, you can't understand it. From the inside looking out, you can't explain it. I can honestly say that you, Dr. Mackey, have really done something good here, though. Because if it, even though it wasn't in your best intention, even though you didn't intend for it, you and your supporters have fanned the flames, and you have revived a very proud Judson nation. As you can all see, twenty-five-hundred proud Judson supporters have spoken out against the disrespect, and have shown that Judson pride is alive and well.
Keenor? Keer? Canoy? Canoyer? I can't read it. I can't read it. Oh, yeah, okay. Insults get you everywhere.
I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Salinas, Mr. Salinas, and Mr. Macias for seeing that naming the school for Dr. Mackey is not what this community wants. I wish I had more than three minutes so I could truly convey my thanks, but there are other Board members I want to address. Mr. LaFoil, you told me at the last Board meeting that a twelve-year-old girl had made you change your mind about the name of the school. Something she said convinced you. And then last week, you sent me a personal message on Facebook saying that you weren't sure anymore. Are you really going to let that young girl down? Are you really going to teach her that you don't mean what you say? Keep to what you told me and vote to change the name. Mr. Flores, your wife retired from teaching in JISD. I worked with her. Those last years were under Mackey's reign. I know where she taught, and I know what that atmosphere was like because of Mackey and his appointments. She and I talked about how bad it was. Can you honestly deny that the last years of her teaching career were also the most discouraging? Do not name this school after the man who took away her joy in teaching. Renee, we go back, and I'm disappointed in you. The strong woman I taught with, the woman whose son I taught, would not support naming a school after a bully. She wouldn't be doing her husband's work. She would be standing up for what's right, and I call on you to do that tonight. Represent the community that elected you. Mr. Sawyer, I have a lot to say to you. And I'm not just some disgruntled employee who's mad that Mackey made me follow Judson rules and be held accountable in my work, even though you stated that that's what all of those who are unhappy about this name are. I was darn good at my job before and after Mackey. I had no problem following rules and being held accountable, nor did my colleagues. But Mackey created an atmosphere of hostility and fear with the way he implemented policy. If you think that's the Judson way, you are not fit to serve this community. Let me quote the Board of Conduct, the Board Code of Conduct, which says, "As a member of the Board, I shall promote the best interests of the district as a whole, and I will make no personal promise or take private action that may compromise my performance or my responsibilities." I live in District One, and you're not representing me. You're representing your own self-interests. I know that Mackey is holding a dirty little secret over your head, and I know what the secret is.
Ma'am, you are out of order.
This district is a small.
You are out of order.
And many people are reaching out to me. Mackey's not going to disclose that secret because he's implicated in it. Stand up to his perceived hold on you. Do the right thing. Vote to change the name. Step down as the President of the Board. In fact, step down from the Board entirely before you're completely exposed. You've proven that you are not the representative of this community. There are a few of you here who remember.
Three minutes. Ma'am, you're done. Three minutes.
That the Board declined to take about twenty-eight years ago, declined to take action on. Those of you who remember.
Ma'am, you're done. Three minutes is up. Ma'am, three minutes are up. Felty?
Thank you for letting me speak. Mr. Sawyer, you continue to waste taxpayer money seeking attorney advice to further your own agenda. You no longer speak for your constituents. Rick Page, a Judson business owner and resident, stood up at the last Board meeting on the nineteenth and said he would be happy to be elected to fill your seat in District One. I'm a resident, a taxpayer, and a retired Judson educator. Mr. Sawyer, I was appalled by your email statement that, that said most of the employees who are complaining are disgruntled former employees. I'm a former employee, twenty-one years, that are unhappy that Dr. Mackey enforced Judson rules and held him accountable. I wouldn't call distinguished educators disgruntled employees. And when one school, Mr. Flores, when one school loses six distinguished educators to another district, it's a total waste of our taxpayers' money. And you know all about it, Mr. Flores. Several of you stated that the Board followed guidelines to name the new school, yet there didn't seem to be adequate public communication or an understanding of how the nomination process even worked. Again, I remind you, one of the district's 2015, 2016 goals is to improve communication. Here we are at the end of the second semester, near the end of the second semester, with Board turmoil over communication issues. Board turmoil. Mr. Flores, your constituents are complaining about you. At one time, you walked your neighborhood and you just solicit support and shake hands with people in District Three. You're losing their support and their respect. I retired in Halloween of 2010. Who retires on Halloween of 2010? It was in the first semester, and I'd planned to retire at the end of the year. Linda Flores, Mr. Flores's wife, retired that year, too. She had planned on teaching the whole year, as I did. We planned to, we had to retire early because of the bully tactics with the superintendent and the former principal that was there. How can you face your wife, Mr. Flores, every day and say you support Mackey? You know what we went through at that school. Mr. LaFoil, at the last Board meeting, I was delighted when you said you would, that I was gonna be happy about your decision. You gave me a big hug. I'm counting on you to be a man of your word. Your vote has never been more crucial than it is tonight. Please help this district move forward and leave the bully reign of Dr. Mackey behind. Parsley's Patriots or Evans Patriots would be a good choice for the new high school. In a recent article about bullying, I read that it is said if we are neutral in situations of injustice, we have chosen the side of the oppressor. We do not need a new school named after a bully and an oppressor. And to the people sitting over there, if you have not worked under him, you would know. If you had worked under him, you would know.
Three minutes, ma'am. Your three minutes are up.
Thank you.
Mr. Frank Arnold?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm not a taxpayer. I live in Bernie, Texas. But I put in twenty-five years in the Judson School District.
Yes.
And, uh... It was a great time for me, and, uh, I enjoyed working with Mr. Parsley. I did not work for Dr. Mackey. I'm not here to bash Dr. Mackey, but I am here to speak for Eddie Parsley. And I am very interested in what happens at Judson, and I'm very concerned about the divisiveness of this meeting. I'm here to respectfully ask you to reconsider the naming of your new high school. During my twenty, twenty-five years at Judson, I was privileged to work with Eddie Parsley. He's a friend, but we didn't always agree, I can assure you. We fought often, but we came out the door and we were together in agreeing to what went on. Eddie is a respected colleague and respected in the education industry. As I stated in my email to each one of you, Mr. P. was a leader. He was a personal compassionate person. He cared about the kids and helping them to become the best that they could be in whatever they wanted to do. All areas of their life. He wanted them to excel both academically and in extracurricular activities. He wanted them all involved in something, because he knew the more involved they were, the better chance they'd have of making it. And several of our kids had some amazing odds. He went to Kirby, eight years, Kitty Hawk, and then Judson High School for six and a half. He put out fires at each of those places. He sent to each school as a problem solver. In each instance, he put together a great team that respected him as a principal and a leader. His faculty and staff liked him, but more importantly, they respected him. All of the honors that Ms. Johnson mentioned, uh, he earned them, and his team. Part of being a good leader, whether it's superintendent, principal, athletic director, whatever, is in hiring good people. Mr. Parsley, in sixteen and a half years, hired good teachers and staff. The high school in those years, since Mr. Parsley, has seen at least six principals that I know of going through that door. Something's wrong with that, in my opinion. Some came to the role without any high school experience.
Mr. Arnold.
Once again, I ask you to reconsider your naming. This isn't about, this is about the time invested. That's the only thing I have to say about Dr. Mackey. It's not about him as a person. It's about the time invested of Mr. Parsley.
Mr. Arnold, three minutes, sir. Thank you.
The naming of our new high school, you know, about any high school, should take into account pride, leadership, and character of the individual. Some Board members are not concerned with those qualities. We've all heard the reasons, which haven't been pleasant, for not naming the new school after the former superintendent, who is still on the payroll. Rumors are numerous about the reasons why the current name was selected. Conspiracy between certain Board members and a former superintendent, payback for undisclosed favors, et cetera. The whole issue of unwanted school name and of not listening to the majority of the Judson community is devastating to the Judson ISD name. Personal agendas need to be set aside for the good of Judson ISD. I applaud especially Mr. Macias and the Salinas's, and hopefully, any other Board member who has been willing to listen to the community and change the name. As I have proposed numerous times, the person most qualified to have his name on the new high school is former administrator Thomas E. Parsley. His leadership of staff, academics, innovations, extracurricular programs, and co-curricular programs, along with his genuine love for students, was outstanding. Some people here tonight have mentioned something about the process, and we need to key, stay with the process. You know, that's fine. Uh, Mr. Sawyer, you said a few months ago, or a couple of months ago, that if we change, we are losing credibility. And as I stated in the last meeting, in 2010, the Judson School District, the Board, put before a bond issue. It was voted down badly. So, you went back to the drawing board and changed it, and then later, it passed. Thus, gaining credibility with the community. It's time for the Board to regain credibility and rescind the name of the new school. Do the right thing, listen to the majority of the Judson community, and save our district's credibility.
Ms. Meyer?
First, I want to also thank Mr. Salinas, Dr. Salinas, and Mr. Macias for listening to what we have to say and trying to move forward with that. I'm here to speak to you about Mr. Sawyer's actions over the past few weeks. I find it dis- I find it disheartening, to say the least, that my own District One representative has behaved in such a way. All but one of my emails were met with an auto-response that said, "Thank you for your input," or no response at all. You said board members hadn't received enough emails about the naming of the new high school, and when you did receive more emails, you didn't even have the courtesy to personally respond. The one personal response I did receive, you blamed the previous board majority for making the deal with Mackey to take a buyout. Granted, this is true. However, the buyout option was the lesser of the two evils. In 2009, the pro-Mackey board extended his contract twice in one year. That's absolutely unheard of. The reason for the buyout in 2014 was to make entirely certain there was no way for Mackey to be around one day longer than the last day of his current contract. I'm sure the foremost concern of the board majority in 2014 was that the newly-elected board of 2015 would be pro-Mackey and offer yet another contract extension if Mackey was still the superintendent in 2015. So here we are, fall of 2015. Mackey is not even working for this district, and he is still intimidating and bullying people. If Mackey is such a man of honor and outstanding character, why hasn't he come forward and removed his name for consideration? Do you really think Mackey cares about this district or the Judson community? If he did, he would have wanted to defuse this conflict. And you, Mackey's minions, want to name our new high school after this man, which will do extensive long-term damage to this district for years to come. Mr. Sawyer, you have shown a blatant disregard for what your constituents have to say on this matter. The Judson community is united on this issue. We do not want our new high school named after Mackey. You, as the board president, should be trying to do what you can to resolve this conflict instead of your divisive ploys to ignore the voices of your community as well as that of your fellow board members. For you to so adamantly fight against the unified community leads us to believe there's something else going on. We don't understand what's going on. Something is happening, though. The Judson community taxpayers, employees can see through your shameless efforts to move your own agenda forward and not do what's in the best interest of the district. To quote Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., "The time is always right to do what is right."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Randy Purnell? Randy?
Officer Smith, you sit right there. Hi, my name is Randy Purnell, a U.S. Army veteran and a two-time elected official. Thank you for your service, sir. Only difference is you were in the Marine Corps because you're a little crazy, and I wasn't crazy enough to go in the Marines, I guess. And your wife, thank you for speaking from your heart. We don't see that enough. People just think so much about what they're going to write. What hurts me tonight, board? Now, speaking from the heart, folks, and I know who my representative is, and I might go for a third term of elected office if I don't like something. If you don't like something, then change it. But you know, something that comes to my spirit and soul is, I am a Christian, so if I offend you, you'll get over it. I fought for my country, so I'm going to say what I have to say. Thousands of years ago, there was a crucifixion on Calvary's cross. They crucified a man named Jesus for all of you, all of you, all of us, okay? I don't want to see another crucifixion. I've come to every single meeting, folks, every single meeting, haven't said a word, but tonight, the Spirit said, "Randy, you got something to say, go say it." So that's what I'm going to do. Aight? Aight? Every single person that's come up here, or I would say 80% of them, sir, I'm so impressed, you're the only one I've heard speak that spoke with no evil in your voice, and I applaud you. It is a shame when we cannot agree to disagree. I looked at a man earlier, and he looked at me and said, "You got a problem, sir? I didn't come here to fight. I love all of you equally." Thank you for your service. I've been there. It's not easy. But God dog it, we elect you folks to make a decision and stick with it. That's called integrity, to always do the right thing no matter who's around or not around, integrity. Thank you, representative. Thank you, folks.
Mr. Johnny Harris?
I've been on this earth 60 years this year, and I want to tell you something. In those 60 years, anytime someone leads with the statement, "It's not about race," it's about race, okay? I'll give you some examples. A few years ago, we named an elementary, Masters Elementary, I can't even think of his first name. Whatever his name was, I doubt if there's 10 people in here who know who James Masters was. But I also know not a single person came to protest the naming. We named Elaf Elementary after Dr. Elaf while he was receiving a paycheck from this district and continued to for years. Ed France, the same thing. Joe Hopkins, the same thing. Not a single person showed up to protest those names. None of those people were African-American or Hispanic. So it appears to me that if you're going to have a name, a school named after you, if you're an African-American or Hispanic, you need to be dead first. Now, Willis Mackey's a friend of mine. I offered to kill him. He refused. This is a high honor, but it wasn't high enough for him to die for. I've heard a lot of talk about the $200,000 buyout. There was no buyout. Dr. Mackey called me when some board members went to his attorney to offer him $200,000 to leave a couple of months early. Somebody here knows the story. You just said it. They didn't want history to repeat itself. Board changes in May, they bring back the superintendent they want. That's what happened with Dr. Elaf. Another history lesson. The only time that we've had this kind of turnout in the community involved another high school, that was the building of what became Wagner High School. We were told then, "It's not about football. It's about the melting pot that we are." Well, it was about football. And what we're seeing tonight is we aren't a melting pot at all. We're a bunch of nuts, bolts, and screws thrown together and trying to make it work. Mr. Macias, you've thrown your fellow board members under the bus to lionize yourself. I've seen your op-eds. You never mentioned that you were one of the five that voted for Mackey. You'd also don't mention that you were one of the board members that wanted to give Dr. Mackey $200,000 of our money to leave early when he didn't ask for it.
Three minutes, Mr. Harris.
If Northeast didn't feel the need to change Robert E. Lee, we don't change Mackey.
Mr. Thomas England, Tom?
I just heard a comment that says the truth speaks for itself. I certainly hope it does. That's fine? I got this down with science. In all fairness, I am a 17-year current employee teacher of Judson ISD. I teach at Wagner High School. Also, for the record, I am a current city councilman in Universal City. For the record, two of your former members of the Judson ISD board that offered an extension of contracts to Dr. Willis Mackey are sitting in the audience, Mr. Wayne Harper and Mr. Johnny Harris. Also, Mr. Purnell, thank you for your service in the United States Army. I am also an Army vet. Two of those, in the Express News this morning, the editorial is "Change the Name." Dr. Mackey's credentials, I heard that phrase kicked around, okay. That includes being certified to teach phys ed, health, and driver's ed, not exactly core academic subjects. It's not my record, State Board for Educator Certification. Dr. Mackey's name on the J-Block, five out of five. Not even Mr. Clarence Alberts and Mr. Thomas Parsley beat him out like 24 to 13 and 25 to 13. I live in the Universal City at 607 Balboa Drive, been a resident of the Judson ISD since 1985. I have spoken previously before you and given my reasons why the current name attached to the new high school is not an appropriate choice. I, like many others, ask you to change the name of the new high school on Evans Road. I must answer the assertion that wanting to change the name from Mackey High School to something else is a racial issue. Prior to Dr. Mackey's use of the phrase "prissy little white girls," the environment in the Judson ISD was race-neutral. If anyone has made this a race issue, it is Dr. Mackey that has done so. Now, you might classify me as a disgruntled employee, but I have seen upfront and personal the bullying tactics of Dr. Mackey to crowds, to teachers, to faculty, to staff, and administrators. This is not the type of individual that gets a high school named after them and is a role model for children. I ask the Judson Board of Trustees, in all fairness, think about the future of the children, the students that will attend the new high school, and I ask you, change the name, please.
Mr. Michael Holden?
Board, I want to tell you, I went to Kirby Junior High, went to Judson. Wife went to Kitty Hawk, we met in high school. I got four kids, been here for 25 years. And I got to tell you, this is the first time I've been ashamed to be a Judson Rocket. I've been ashamed to be a Judson Rocket because you all have chosen to make this a race issue. Board, you all have made this a race issue. This was not a race issue when Kerry Wagner was given the distinguished honor of being named a high school. In 2005, there wasn't, most of you guys weren't on this board. In 2005, how many people complained about the name of that school? How many people complained about the process of naming that school? How many people asked to come back and say, "Let's change it to something else"? The people of this community have spoken. They're asking for you to reconsider what you all have done. The race issue is because of this board. This board could have solved this issue very easily. There were a lot of people of color that are still alive that could have been selected for this position. This had, the race part of this was only because he was black. But he was not, that is not the reason why the school was named after him, and that's not the reason for objecting to him being called, the school being called that. It is the person that is the important part, not their skin color.
Amen. Amen.
Ms. Isiana Norwood? Ms. Norwood?
My name is East Leanna Norwood. I have been in the Judson School District almost my entire life. I went to Olympia Elementary, Kitty Hawk Middle School, and I graduated a year early in the top 3% of my class from Judson High School in 2008, a full year early so I could start paying taxes early. I own a home right down the street. I've lived there for almost four years now, and I am a direct byproduct of the 800-pound gorilla being a non-issue. So, that being said, I've heard a lot of very emotionally charged people speak before me, and I'm not one of those. Through my entire time at Judson High School, my brothers have gone there, my own mom, family members, my grandma taught in Judson ISD for over 20 years, I have met so many people that have inspired me, that still teach there, still work there, and I have to say Mackey was not one of them. I've never met him. I did hear him speak. I was not impressed. And honestly, I feel that the biggest issue is he unfortunately did not have an opportunity to make a lasting impression on the district. He was a very small segment of what it is to have Rocket pride. Judson's been on the map since the 80s. I have my stepdad's football recommendations to show that, countless newspaper clippings. So, I mean, it shouldn't even have, he shouldn't even have been a selection. I mean, there's many people that have been there before him that are much more deserving, so I hope you'll consider one of them instead. Thank you.
Mr. William Call?
I'd like to talk about two things today. The first thing, I would like to congratulate the Judson Rocket football team for their very successful season. We've still got two more games to play. Judson High School has been nominated by USA Today as the best high school football program in the country. Let me remind you of some of the accomplishments. They have been state champions six times. They've been to the semifinal game 19 times. They have the longest-running winning season in Texas at 30 or 31, I can't remember exactly. Huh? 39, thank you, thank you. Currently, they're second in voting out of 20 nominations in the Frontier Region, which covers all of Texas, Oklahoma, Colorado, Utah, Wyoming, Montana, New Mexico, and Idaho. There is a $2,500 prize that USA Today is going to give to the football program that wins. So I'd like to ask you to all go to contest USA Today and vote for Judson High School. You can vote other than other elections. You can vote many times, as many as you want, so please do that. The other thing I'd like to talk about quickly is the naming of the high school. I belong to many professional organizations and work for a big corporation here in San Antonio. Everybody that I associate with know that I'm a Judson Rocket fan. It might be because I wear a Judson shirt every Friday night, Friday. But we are becoming the laughingstock of the community over this naming of the school. They think it's very strange that we're naming a school after somebody that was only here seven years, somebody that's still on the payroll, and so I would like to ask the board to review and recommend them change the name. I would like to recommend Eddie Parsley. I didn't do any booklets for him because everybody that knows him or knows of him knows what his accomplishments were, and we don't have to make up a booklet. But I would like to recommend that Mr. Eddie Parsley, the high school be named after him. Thank you.
I probably said it wrong. Tammy? Close.
I have a couple of things I wanted to address. One of which is, in my last name, it's Goodiel. I know, I look like a prissy little white girl, but I'm not, I'm very much Hispanic. And come from a very proud lineage. My great-great-great-great-great something-or-other grandfather was Juan Seguin. I am not racist in any way, shape, or form, never have been, never will be. I've raised my son to not ever see color. He graduated from Judson in two thousand and ten. I had an unfortunate meeting with Mr. Mackey, and he's a detestable man. And I, I didn't even notice his color, I just noticed that he was a detestable man. And I didn't show up for the first vote, because my son graduated from Judson, so I don't get notices anymore like I did, because I don't have a child at Judson. So, unless I happened to look on the website, I would have been here for that meeting to vote against the name. The next issue is, Mr. Salyer, your behavior is deplorable. And today's meeting was terrible. I think you need to do the right thing and vote your conscience. And be the man that I know you can be, because you are in my district. And you need to do the right thing and stop what's going on. I really want you to do that. This is a terrible thing that's going on, it was a terrible thing that we had to watch when the meeting started, for all of us. I was absolutely horrified, and looking around, we were all horrified. It was, I couldn't believe it, I could not believe that this was going on. It was like watching five-year-olds. And it needs to stop. Everybody needs to come to an agreement. But anyway, thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. William Young, Mr. Young?
Just for my background, I'm a Vietnam vet, I was a platoon leader. I was also the first black commander of a battalion-sized unit in the Texas National Guard. So, I think I know that when I talk late in my paper about respect, I know what respect But anyway, I wanted to express my disappointment in the board's unilateral decision to name the new high school, Mackey High School. The school board, in its comment, in its website welcomes community input. You receive that input and you ignore that input. After receiving this input, you completely ignored the community to make an egregious decision to name the high school Mackey. According to their survey, at least four other names were suggested ahead of Mackey. Conjecture suggests that the special board meeting held on September sixteenth was held for the board to circumvent community input and make this unilateral decision. I met with Mr. Mackey, and I can tell you that the man did not command the respect to warrant naming a high school after him. According to an article in the Beaumont Enterprise, Mackey's tenure in the southeast Texas was marred by controversy. He was named superintendent of Port Arthur ISD in March two thousand and three, was credited with helping the district pass a one-hundred-million-dollar bond package. But in the three-year period that followed, the district saw a downward spiral. In January two thousand and six, trustees planned to discuss disciplining him, but failed to provide a reason. The item was postponed and was asked for a hearing. Later, the trustees accepted his recognition in two thousand and six, again with little explanation. Beaumont ISD hired him that same month in a split vote as assistant superintendent for secondary education. He left the district in two thousand and seven to take the JISD position. Ironically, he ended his tenure adjusting with similar circumstances. Some argue that the backlash in naming the new high school is racially motivated. Such an argument would be believable if the district did not already have a Karen Wagner or Pascal Elementary. According to the Texas Association of School Boards, there's a difference between doing a job and doing a job well. One gets you a nod, the other earns you a handshake. One leaves you tired, the other leaves you tired but proud. One keeps things going, the other makes things better. Which job do you do? You can see, you can use your gut feeling or what you read in the paper, you can base it on election results, which usually come too late, or you can simply start here. TSB believes in the importance of the board's service. More than that, they believe in the power of good governance. Trustees and boards who do not only know what to do, but know what's right. We know you don't, didn't sign on for board service, but just do the, do the job, but to do the job well. And you can start here.
You're three minutes up, sir. Thank you.
All right, first, let me say I'm disgusted by the insinuation that this issue was one of race. How dare you reduce our valid concerns to something so despicable? That's disgusting, you ought to be ashamed. Again, as a proud black woman, I reiterate my strong opposition to honoring Dr. Mackey this way. I knew him as a student, I graduated Wagner as a salutatorian in two thousand and ten, and he was a bully to myself and my fellow students. I come tonight bearing the letters of my sorority, Alpha Signata, because one thing I learned from sisterhood is to stand up for what I believe in. I want to thank the board for listening to the people and revisiting this issue. Clearly, this is important to a lot of people. It is not actually a divisive issue in the community as a whole. We seem to be fairly united on this. But this board remains divided for reasons I cannot fathom. I don't understand why so many are willing to make this the hill to die on when there are so many other choices that can satisfy all, like Mr. Parsley. If Dr. Mackey had any grace at all, he would withdraw his name and stop all the trouble. Instead, he has apparently campaigned tirelessly to achieve this one last objective. That's not what a leader does. I ask once again that the board reconsider this choice and listen to the vast majority of your constituents. I will remind you that you work for us, not for Dr. Mackey. And I reiterate my determination to remove from the board anyone who refuses to listen to the people. Changing your mind is not a sign of weakness. It is a sign of a true public servant that wishes to reflect the voice of the people. So, I ask again, reconsider your decision and make it right.
I do want to thank you guys for allowing me the opportunity to come up here and speak. I think what several people have said here tonight is something else that I will reiterate, is that I am completely appalled by the things that I have heard tonight. I didn't grow up in the Judson ISD District, my aunt did, and because of that, I began to go to the games, and I loved what I saw here. I grew up in a small town, and I love that atmosphere, and I thought that that's what Converse and the Judson School District represented it. And I'm taken back. I sit here with my twelve-year-old niece, who is a member of the school district here, who has sat and looked at me and her mom like, "What are they saying? What is going on here?"" You know, I have two young kids, and before I even go there, to sit here and hear people say that the reason that teachers were leaving this school district and the reason that this school district has changed was because of Dr. Willis Mackey. As an employee of the state of Texas with Child Protector Service for over thirteen years, I have had so many issues trying to get these schools to work with us on trying to protect children. On two occasions, I got locked down in the school, and this was prior to Dr. Willis Mackey, because of the violence that was going on in the school. So, to sit here and try and blame all of the issues on this school district and what's going on now because of Dr. Willis Mackey is appalling to me. I really think the issue starts with the fact that as adults in this room, we're more concerned about what's concerning us than what's concerning the children. We're sitting here trying to make a decision about a name because we're more concerned about that than what's going on in the schools, and what's going on to our children and in our neighborhoods. I could tell you now, I really will reconsider my kids staying in this school district if this is what they're going to be exposed to. If this is the teachers and the representatives that they have to sit here and say that they're doing what's in the best interest of the students. I'm appalled by that. You know, I sat here thinking, you know, the election year is coming up, and you know, they're going to, I don't like it anymore, I don't want to vote anymore, because it's all about slander, it's all about making sure we can bring out the worst in the other opponent. And that's been very clear and very distinct by everybody who's spoken here tonight. You know, one gentleman walked up to us before this meeting started and said, "Nothing is personal, it's not personal, it's just about changing the name." And I will say, I don't know this, Mr. Parsley gentleman, but I will say that I believe that any school would be honored to have his name based on what you guys are saying. But in the same token, I believe a school would be honored to be named after Dr. Willis Mackey. I look at the list of the accomplishments that he's done for this school district, and we sit here and say that he is a bully and that he's thrown under the bus? I knew about Dr. Willis Mackey prior to coming here, because when I went to college, I had several friends that were from Newton High School where he was a principal at, and they spoke highly of him. And both of them can say that they went to college because of Dr. Willis Mackey. And I think before having this meeting and before the voting, we should have had some of the students come in here, not just the select few that we wanted to bring and make sure they could say that he was a bully, but those that he touched their lives and made a difference in.
Three minutes, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Lewis Thornton?
I also did not grow up here in Judson, and I would have to say, after serving twenty-five years in the military, that this process and the comments that have been given tonight are disturbing. It's, I thought we were better than this. I did not go to Iraq and Afghanistan to come back to this. I thought we were better. So, from tonight, let's do better. That's all I got to say.
Mr. John Coldwater?
My wife and I have both been part of the Judson District for a long time. I went to Coronado Kitty Hawk Judson, she went to Liveo Kitty Hawk Judson. Our three kids are in the process of going through the district. My oldest one graduated this year. My youngest will graduate, I think, in the second class of the new high school. You know, this ought to be one of the best things you guys get to do, right? I mean, you guys have to do some really tough stuff as board members, make some really hard decisions. This ought to be one of the things that's fun to do, right? To recognize somebody for their service and to honor the district and a person by naming a high school after them. That's something that's going to live long beyond any of your tenure, but it'll be associated with your tenure for a long time, right? So, even after you guys aren't board members anymore, whatever the name of the high school is, will be a direct reflection on you, our district, and the rest of the city, right? And the rest of the city is watching us to look and see what we're going to do, right? And, you know, the district has been blessed to have so many wonderful teachers, coaches, administrators that are wonderful candidates, and not to mention all of the distinguished graduates that have gone on to do amazing things. When you name a school after someone like Karen Wagner, that's the bar, in my opinion. And you really can't do anything less than that with the naming of the next school. And so, I would encourage you all to do your best to put your individual differences aside, to think about how you want to be remembered as a board, how you want Judson to be viewed in the San Antonio community by the naming of our new high school. Thank you.
Bobby, Mr. Swatzenberger?
Start the clock. Last time was two-thirty, Mr. Salyer, but I want to address the eight-hundred-pound gorilla first. William Pachella Elementary was named after a very honorable black man. Karen Wagner High School was named after a very honorable black woman who was a Judson alum and served our country. Clarence Alberts was a very honorable black man who spent a lot of time in this district and was the top vote getter in your survey. All honorable people. Eight-hundred-pound gorilla, those were people that deserved schools named after them, not somebody that bullied staff, teachers, administrators. I speak on behalf of the community and the teachers, who have asked me multiple times to come and address this issue, and I ran a youth group with close to five thousand kids came through. The community did not appreciate Mr. Mackey. They didn't. And I speak on behalf of Paco, Jew Boy, the prissy white women, the flunky principals that were ordered to the front of the room, because that's what you do with the dumb ones. These are things that Dr. Mackey did to our staff. Don't spit in the face of your educators, board. Don't do it. They're insulted by what you're doing. If you continue this path and you want this decision to stand, you're spitting in their face. It's time to put the Mackey era to rest. It divided our district like I've never seen before in forty-plus years. It's time to put this to rest. You can put this issue to rest tonight, or it will be put to rest in two years, when the board is overturned. You have overwhelming opposition against this from the school district, the employees, the community members. I stood on the field at Alamo Stadium, congratulations, Coach Anderson, go Rockets, and I stood with nineteen ninety graduate Mike Jinks, another honorable black man from Judson High School who's now the head coach at Bowling Green. And I mentioned about the school being named Mackey. He laughed. He goes, "You've got to be kidding me." "No, sir, they did that." He goes, "Judson School Board has issues that they would do something like that." So, the eight-hundred-pound gorilla? No, that's bull. Do the right thing, board. Unite our district. This will come up again, it will not die unless you put it to rest tonight.
Mr. Stephen Dooley, Mr. Dooley?
Thank you to my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ for this opportunity. I'm not sure what happened here tonight. Looks like the meeting took a turn. I consider myself a neutral party here. I'm a military transparent myself. We retired from the military, my wife, she retired from the military, twenty-two, almost twenty-two years in the Navy, and I served in the Air Force myself. I did not know Dr. Mackey, I still don't know Dr. Mackey. But what I do know is the impact that Dr. Mackey had on me and making a life-changing decision to bring my family here. Like the lady said here, she didn't see his race, she didn't see his color. I didn't either. But what I did see was his impact and his influence on the community when I decided But what I did see was his impact and his influence on the community when I decided to buy a home here and bring my son and my family here. My son graduated from Judson High School, and I'm very proud of that. I have grandchildren now, and I expect them to graduate from Judson High School. One of the things that, just the impact that he had on me was the education. I heard a lot about the sports, but the education programs that were going on here. For me, seeing is believing. When I heard about the, you know, these kids graduating from college and high school, I was like, "What? I don't believe it." So like a lot of you who don't believe Dr. Mackey is worthy of that, having the school named after him, I didn't believe in seeing that they would be able to graduate with college credits like they are right now. So for me, you know, having that type of, I like to be an impactful person myself, but to see children graduate from college, from my church, you know, from little ones on up, it was unbelievable. I didn't have the opportunity coming up. So I would say that I don't know why we're here, but I would hope that you guys would do the right thing in voting to keep that name, Dr. Willis Mackey, as you chose to months ago when I came here and didn't say a thing, because I thought it was done. So hopefully, by the grace of God, it's done.
Good evening, everybody. I'm 2A, 31-year. I'm a veteran. I retired after 31 years. Ooh, this is, I am lost for words. At one point, I thought there was a process, and I thought that when you have a process, you separate the personal from the process. I'm not, I don't know Dr. Mackey. Be honest with you, I don't. The only thing I know of him is the, some of the programs that he implemented on the educational side. My son and daughter graduated from Wagner. My son went to Wagner one year, I mean Judson one year, and he spent the rest of his time graduating from Wagner. I wish that we can look at the positive impacts, and I, like I said, I don't know about the personal. I don't know about him being a bully, because like I said, I don't know him. But this, this process has left me completely puzzled. So, thank you for your time.
Okay. You want to take a break? Want to take a break?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes? We're going to take a 10-minute break. We've been sitting here, everybody's been sitting here two hours. I think everybody needs to stretch. Be back in 10 minutes.